Hayden for a ticket, I was supposed to pull from the county. You know, but you know, John's a bit liberal.
We're now, we're now reconvening with the April eighteenth, two thousand seventeen Akonah County Open Work Session. Our first item on the agenda is a request submitted by the Town of Willards to waive county property taxes. I understand, Mr. Strasburg, you're gonna guide us in this?
I'll make a feeble attempt. It's a derelict property and they would like to have the taxes waived. I think it's appropriate. Obviously, neither of the two of them do that.
Was the property ever, did it ever go to tax sale or anything like that?
Yeah, nobody. It's one of those properties, John, where the, you know, the value of the property is such that, you know, the back taxes exceed the value. So it's just one of those eyesores you'd like to get rid of. Towns ask for the waiver and, you know, we're supportive of the waiver.
I'm familiar with it. I want to have a look at it.
I've seen it.
What are they gonna do with the property if they acquire it from town? That's what they said they wanted to do, is acquire for the town, I guess? Are they gonna try to demolish and resell?
I don't know.
Have we done this before for towns? Okay. I mean, second, you know, Mardella Springs, Sharp Town, you know, there's probably other houses that would qualify for this sort of thing.
They'll spend ten or twelve thousand dollars tearing this house down.
Yes.
Okay.
So it hasn't happened often, Mark, but I think in these kinds of circumstances, it's appropriate for the county to waive.
I can imagine maybe some other towns maybe, you know, if this happens, it's a day.
So then it'll end up being property of the Town of Willards, right?
Yes, sir.
I just am curious, as the president, it may set with, because the City of Salisbury also has a lot of dilapidated properties that it's working very hard towards actually tearing them down through their own efforts.
Yeah, I think when you have properties that are, for lack of any better terms, derelict properties and the municipality has utilization for those properties, even if it's just open space, I think it's appropriate to cooperate because, I mean, these properties are eyesores, they're not serving any public need, any public good. As a matter of fact, they're probably a detriment. So to the extent that we can clear these types of property from landscape and potentially put them to better use, I think it's appropriate, especially when realistically you know you're never gonna collect those taxes, those back taxes. You know, they're on the books, but collection is not gonna happen in all likelihood.
If this property were in the county and we were going to demolish it, the county was gonna demolish it, what they would do would put the cost of the demolition on the tax bill and there's a possibility that we would never get paid for it.
That's absolutely correct.
You know, I mean, if they've got a property that's not worth anything, that's got a twelve, fifteen thousand dollar lien against it, might not never. So we're ahead of the game here.
Absolutely right.
I was gonna assume that, so.
It gives you a better opportunity to put the property to productive use and to eliminate an eyesore and a detriment.
Yeah, just, again, I would just be concerned on precedent, and the City of Salisbury has at least a hundred dilapidated houses, at least a hundred. And I know they're going through measures right now to try to address those concerns in some of the areas, some specific areas, and they're using funding through the federal government to try to address those concerns. I just, you know, just a president issue for me.
Yeah, I understand, but it's also money that we're never going to receive, basically, from these.
It's monopoly money.
Yeah, it's on the books, but we can't count that as, I wouldn't count that as receivables.
Right.
Then if it was, like I said, if it was in the county, we'd be paying the government for that.
Absolutely right.
The Town of Willards is gonna be paying it.
If it's over stolen, good back product ownership, they go back on tax.
That's right.
That's correct.
Any other? Okay. What's, what is gonna be requested on our part? Is this, is this something that needs to be done through resolution or?
It will have to be, you know, authorized by council through the form of a resolution. Is the Town of Willards going to actually have this property transferred in their name before we need to approve that dollar amount that's gonna be waived?
I would, I would think that would make most sense because we're waiving, we're making the waiver for the town, so the transfer would have to be made before we did that. Yes, you're right.
I think the town wants assurance that it's gonna be waived before they take title to the property.
So we need consensus, yes. Everybody good? Yes. Right, okay. Well, we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Second item on the agenda is a county water, countywide water sewer, east side corridor study. Weston Young, I know. Weston, how are you?
How are you doing?
Pete, how are you?
I'm good, John.
You gonna join us today?
Maybe, if you want.
Phone-ing a friend.
He was trying to make you forward.
Pete, I know you've been involved through George Miles and Bure. You've been involved in a lot of discussions in reference to countywide water sewer treatment, water and sewer. If you could state your name and company and for us there.
My name is Peter Bozick. I'm with George Miles and Bure Engineers here in Salisbury. And two years ago, we were hired by the county to produce this east side corridor sewer feasibility planning study.
Where would you like to lead, gentlemen?
I'll start off and then I'll hand things over to Dallas and Pete for specifics. We are aware that in the council priorities, at least three of the council members have put in their priorities the countywide water and sewer plan. I think we have several areas across the county where a countywide water and sewer plan would be helpful. We have mobile home parks that have sewer issues. We have areas within little pockets right next to the City of Salisbury that could benefit from city utilities if the city is willing and able to provide said services. The Morris Mill project, where we brought water from the City of Fruitland to assist contaminated wells. These are all, I'll say, specific projects. This report completed by GMB is another one of said projects that we're prepared to discuss today. But I do think there needs to be a larger discussion on how we approach, say, failing septic's or contaminated wells countywide. So with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Dallas.
Yeah, so the report basically looked at three alternatives. One, annexing that area into the city. Two, establishing an urban service district. And then three, the county providing a, our own foray into water and sewer service. Options one and two with tapping into the city system are the most affordable right now. If we go in and try to put in our own system, we're looking at basically double what we would be doing if we were, what we would pay if that area tapped into the city system.
Do they have capacity? Does the city have capacity to take this on?
That's another option we have to, you know, we'd have to take a look at to see if, you know, us just.
They do. They do. Definitely, they do. For this particular area and this amount of flow, where they are right, where they are right now.
So for, for the city, for there to be annexation, of course, the property owner has to agree to that. Does the property owner have to, I would assume the property owner has to agree to establish an urban service district as well? Is that not correct?
Yes, it's a petition, very similar to the lighting urban service districts and things like that. I think it's seventy-five percent of the people in an area have to agree upon it. In this particular area, I think it's in the first, they break it into three areas. They examine the service area. One, we met with some homeowners who basically cannot have anybody occupying their house because the septic system failed and there's no room to put a new septic system in. In some cases, they can, but they have to move their well and possibly their neighbor's well, and that cost just gets exponentially higher. So this is an area that has known septic failures, some of which can be addressed. Other cases, the houses have gone vacant until something occurs in this area.
Okay. Sorry, Dallas. Did you interrupt?
You're fine. So one of the, one of the big, in my mind, one of the big drawbacks with this, us providing that water and sewer service to them is the need to get a, to discharge to groundwater right now. We would not be, because of the TMDL on the river, we'd be severely restricted, definitely not allowed to at all to discharge to the river the way the county does right, the way the city does right now.
That's if we wanted to do our own wastewater treatment plan, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. So we'd be looking at spray irrigation or something like that to discharge it to the ground. I've seen similar instances where, one of the challenges with the spray irrigation is a lot of times you can't do it during the winter time. So you end up having to build large storage facilities and then basically pump all year round. You've gotta find farmers that are willing to allow you to use their facilities and you might not, you might need to water when they don't wanna water. So it does become a challenge. We did receive a follow-up proposal from GMB to start looking into more detail about providing water and sewer out there based off of the area one, I believe. And we are investigating to the, developing a larger master plan for water and sewer for the county. We received an initial proposal and based off of the cost of that, we feel like it would be better probably to bid that out as an open bid project because it was substantial cost.
Pete, is there ever, I know you had the three scenarios here. Has there ever been any thought, and of course, after what we went through earlier today, I don't know whether I even wanna bring this up now, but a private-public partnership like with somebody like Tide Water? There's a lot of developable, land that's suitable for development where there's expansion possibilities in that area. And I was wondering if any thought had been given to that?
We did look at that to some extent, not in detail, not in specific proposals. It still is, it would be an option. But I think that, you know, it's hard to say that, you know, that that's sort of more of a political discussion as well as just a straight engineering discussion, you know, and because of some of the politics of it and the advantages and disadvantages of it that we didn't get into it within the scope of work with this project. We do know that, you know, whatever company would make an offer or we would partner with, somebody would have to have a place to put the effluent, to treat it up with the clean water, which is square one. You start from where the treated wastewater goes in an environmentally safe way and then you kind of work back from there. And without those private companies bringing to us a disposal option, it's kind of like, without that, it's, we just didn't really wanna get too far into the operations agreement. I will fill in a little bit more that when we looked at these areas, you know, we did look at different ways that the county could serve the areas. And one is, you know, holistically where they get into, to have a sewer system that ultimately would handle all this area. But we also looked at, tried to break them up into three different areas or smaller areas. And we didn't get very far with that or felt that was, that was the way to go. In other words, a good example would be if we could have taken certain sections of that area, a certain community of that area, or like, just because, if you know how that is, and put in a system like they have in Village Downriver, and then try to get an adjacent property nearby that had land and have a disposal field. That would be called a community system. And if you want that path, then you would need four, five, or six different community systems where you would just start to take certain neighborhoods and if they were in close proximity to land, then you could, you know, you could do a groundwater disposal. If the land was good for groundwater disposal, well, obviously, the land, now, the land there that's there now is not the best for groundwater disposal or septic systems. It's not the worst either. I mean, you had the position historically when you have septic systems, you know, when you think they're gonna last twenty, thirty years, a number of times it's the case where, okay, you're gonna put these septic systems after twenty, thirty years, then you put sewers in. So oftentimes, that septic systems are sort of a bridge to eventually putting in sewer systems in that regard. And the points that Wes, they made, really right now where they can't, where they can't replace those systems, you know, creates a tremendous economic loss. This study also was sort of a symbolic or prototype that what we would learn here, you can apply to other areas, you know, around the county. Because, you know, we happened to pick this area, it is rather severe, but there are multiple areas of different sizes. This was sort of a reasonably large size and it was reasonably large in the sense that we broke it into three different service areas, that we could actually make three projects out of. We first went to east side corridor, which basically used Old Ocean City Road as a backbone. The county starts at Civic Avenue. We went out Old Ocean City Road and we went to the bypass and then we went past the bypass to Zion Church Road or Hobbs Road type of thing like that. So we, now, when you get to Beigland Park Road, the city sort of bisects the county area of Beigland Park Road. So we made, three areas we made was between Beigland Park Road and Civic Avenue as area one, between Beigland Park Road and the bypass is area two, and then the bypass, the Hobbs Road is area three. The other thing to consider about area three is it's not in the state planning as a priority funding area. You pretty much need to be inside the bypass to be a priority funding area, which means that, you know, the state's really not gonna look at providing any state funds to do infrastructure outside, you know, priority funding area.
When you talk about state and federal funding, what percentage do you think they would, that they would come up with in a situation like this if they were interested in doing it?
Well, the state and federal funding that we, the two primary sources, state, state of Maryland, what the state of Maryland offer. And they've recently made some changes to some of their funding scenarios and they would use money from the Bay Restoration Fund. You have, actually, you have a number of sources. You have a water quality improvement fund where you can go and get loan funds for any type of water, you know, sewer, water pollution projects, water. Then you have the BNR funds that they put into effect thirty years ago that they're now phasing out, which would allow you some neutral removal. And then they had the Bay Restoration Fund, which is known as the flush tax, which was enhanced neutral removal, which was targeted to the sixty-seven largest plants in the state. And they've pretty much got all those projects underway. Most of them are completed, they're still maybe ten percent in the process of being completed. They wanna take some of that money now and use that money to connect septic tanks to treatment plants. And in round numbers, they're looking at grant funds on the order of about twenty thousand dollars per house to connect that house to a treatment plant that meets E and R, which by the end of this year, the Salisbury plant should qualify, when they, they should finish their improvements by the end of this year and there'll be an E and R plan. And so, you know, that's, that's gonna get you a part of the way there. You know, generally, to put in sewers, you know, from scratch in an area, you're looking at at least twenty thousand dollars a house to put sewers in. The next area of major funding comes from the USDA under their Rural Development Program, sometimes about rural utility services. It's community water, wastewater programs. They specifically target rural areas. They target areas with populations less than ten thousand or less. City of Salisbury would not qualify for any USDA funds under their Community Facilities Program because of their population base. But they have, their grants and loans are based on affordability. They have certain criteria for affordability and it's usually in the neighborhood of one and a half percent of a median household income. So depending on the income, if the sewer costs more than that, then they start kicking in some grants. Generally, you know, it might be twenty-five percent, thirty percent. They don't really grant a hundred percent of the project, but, and they do always make sure you have a loan first before the grant. You can't get a loan grant without the loan, you have to have the loan first and then grant. It did apply in Morris Mill. It came through at Flying Collars on Morris Mill. So we've got part grant and part loan. And it was based on affordability, and it was based on affordability of the service area. In that case, the service area included not just the residents of Morris Mill, but also the residents of Fruitland helped in the overall equation for affordability. But those are the two sources, you know, where you could get money. But sewer infrastructure, it's a very high capital cost of entry. And the sewer, the infrastructure that you're putting in, you expect it to last fifty to a hundred years. So that's part of the cost, you know, that you put it in now and then, you know, you don't, you don't really have to replace it for fifty to a hundred years. Generally, you try to pay it off, particularly the sewer part, the stuff that's buried in the ground, you're gonna wanna pay that off over thirty or forty years. USDA allows you to go forty years on the payment, so that reduces the payment, but extends the time period. The money from Maryland is a thirty-year loan.
For those, for those three urban service districts that you have kind of outlined here, what percentage of the total issue countywide is that really addressed, do you think? I mean, are we, those are kind of the hot areas, but...
That's a hot area. That's a good point. When it came to us, there were six hundred and fifty-two onsite septic systems in that area.
That were?
That were, and almost all of them were failing.
Okay.
You know, designated by one category or another could have been considered, could be considered failing. You know, of those six hundred and fifty-two, there was also some churches, there's about a dozen, maybe ten churches in the area, in that service area, there's some commercial establishments. So in the, to equate it to residential equivalent residential units, there's about eight hundred and fifty equivalent residential units. It produced, on paper, based on the state guidelines, it would produce about two hundred thousand gallons a day of wastewater flow from those areas. Some of the areas are not fully built out, there's some vacant land. We looked at what would happen if that was fully built out and it would essentially almost double the flow to four hundred thousand gallons a day. So, you know, you're looking, and when it would double the flow, you'd have fifteen hundred EDUs there in units. What percentage that is of the entire county area, whether that's fifty percent of all the areas you need to be concerned with, or twenty-five percent, you know, I don't really know the numbers. I know certain other areas. There is quite a lot of other areas that are not, I mean, there's lots, I think there's like seventeen thousand septic systems in the county, if I've got that right. So we're talking a thousand total. And out of those seventeen thousand, you've got all the mobile home parks and then you've got major subdivisions, say, on the west side, that they're not as old and their lots are two or three times as large. So you don't really expect to be needing to provide them sewer service for any foreseeable future.
Right.
Areas where you do expect to see needing to deal with sewage is where the lots are smaller and the developments are older. And where the soils are poor.
Yeah, soils are.
And where the soils are poor soils.
Okay.
Weston, I guess a little history. Apparently, back in the seventies, one of our local municipalities had a lot of failing septic's and they didn't wanna put in water and sewer, but they were forced to, either by the federal or state government. How far away, how far away are we from that in this area where somebody steps in of higher authority and says, you gotta do this?
That's a good question. I haven't heard of that happening recently. We see it on the stormwater side of the house where they feel stormwater pollutants and such are not being met and they then come in with a heavy hand. I haven't heard that happening. I think in the case of Morris Mill would probably have been a good example and Pete was with it from the start. When you have contaminated wells and there's hundreds of homes, just under three hundred properties, that no longer had quality drinking water, there was, a solution had to be found. If we did not have Fruitland nearby and Fruitland willing to extend out there, I'm not, I'm not certain how, how that would have been handled. In, in the case of certain areas, it's, if people have a septic system that works or a water quality system that's treating their water, they're gonna be hesitant to join into a program and help pay it back. And they're gonna be hesitant to join on the bandwagon of trying to get the state to come down and condemn a whole area and then force the county's hand. So, so honestly, I don't know. I haven't heard of that situation occurring recently, but we can look into it.
Fruitland was an issue of water, though. Fruitland specifically water.
Drinking water.
This is septic.
Safe drinking water.
This is sewage.
Yes, this is specifically septic.
Sewage. So I guess the question would be, does there come a point in time where the conditions that exist right now in this area will begin to then threaten the water, the well system there or not?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, there's always that risk. The wells pull from an aquifer further down, so, but, but given the groundwater will be influenced by a failing septic.
Because the sense of urgency developed in Fruitland when all of a sudden you had tainted wells. Now, that isn't the situation here, so no one's really, you know, there's not too much concern. But are we getting to a stage or should we anticipate that?
This particular area, which is, may not apply to all areas of the county, but one thing that's most critical in the east side corridor area is when you use the term a triple bottom line project. It's got three potential problem issues that you're dealing with in here. You would solve three problems and one with that. So this is an ideal project that you wanna attack. You know, you've got the, the public health problem of failing septic systems and exposure to infectious diseases. Second, you got the economic loss, which what Weston mentioned is where those houses are left uninhabited and it lowers the economic value of everyone. So you got economic problem. And third, you got an environmental problem in what we've just talked about in terms of contaminating the groundwater affecting people's wells. That particular area, you know, has been identified as, is in the far recharge area for the City of Salisbury drinking water supply that's in the park. So when looked, now like, you know, in terms of that groundwater, maybe seventy, fifty, seventy-year horizon where that groundwater over time sort of moves, you know, moves towards the park. You obviously probably have a lot of specific examples where wells are contaminated with either bacteria or nitrates just in that area, but, but you generally have an environmental problem that that nitrogen is either moving towards the bays or contaminating other drinking water supply. So this particular project area is what you would call a triple bottom line project. It's a public health concern, it's an economic concern, and it's an environmental concern.
Does that lead to?
Morris Mill was obviously an environmental concern, I mean, was a public health concern because of toxicity.
Right.
And then, you know, it was gonna lead quickly to, to an economic concern, very much so.
So again, I guess, because this, I don't think this is gonna get done without some type of federal or state funding, so I guess...
Absolutely. There's no question about that. No question about that.
So we have the study, we know there's the need. I guess, what's the next step? And we can't be the only, the only jurisdiction in the entire country that's, has this problem. So are you familiar with any other counties that have been faced with this type of a problem and maybe what the resolution might be?
Yeah, well, I think the resolutions are, potential resolutions are listed in here and then we would just have to make sure, and I'll say, as of last month, the City of Salisbury Mayor Day said he, he was open and willing to be flexible on projects such as this. Pete was in that meeting as well. And so, so I think going from a, the cheapest option, as Dallas mentioned, is connecting to the city. Now, whether we do it through annexation or we do it through urban service district, I think most citizens prefer the urban service district route, so they're not having city taxes as well. They're paying a higher water bill, but it's, it's better than not having, not being able to occupy that property to begin with.
Well, I think what, what may be the missing part of that puzzle is the fact that you may have five houses on one street, but maybe only three of them wanna connect and you have two that don't wanna connect. and you have two that don't want to connect. So it's, I I don't know exactly where that number's going to fall, where where we're going to get enough, who are going to agree to do it to warrant the extension.
Well, I think, I think at that point, too, though, wh- once you run the water down the street, or you run the sewer down the street, they don't have an option but to connect at some point. Do they want to do voluntarily at at the initial onset? No, but eventually, septic systems fail, wells fail, they have to connect, you know, and then there's nothing, if there's no room for them to connect into it.
The the other thing...
Or there's no room to expand, they they would have to connect.
The the other thing to consider, at least with Service Area One, is that we have a lot of flooding complaints as well. Um, when these houses were put in, stormwater was not a consideration. So if we're going to be opening up the roads to install sewer or water, um, we would want to look at putting in stormwater upgrades as well, and then that's just going to drive the, i- if we want to try to solve, you know, and and, um, help redevelop these areas, um, we we would want to consider stormwater as well.
This, this addresses sewer, um, wouldn't there be water going to these homes at the same time? Wouldn't this go along with, I mean, wouldn't this be the smart thing to do, do water and sewer at the same time?
I I think the answer to that is is yes. I think one thing that's, that's, I don't know, it's it's special, but this particular area, particularly in Area One, it's built out about eighty or ninety percent. So it's not like you're putting in, a- a- and the houses are close together. So in terms of this infrastructure that we're talking about, and why we talked about the City of Salisbury, it's the mo- not only is it cheapest, but from an engineering point of view, it's the most feasible and the most practical, because you, you know, when you put the system in, you know, it'll be used throughout, it's not like you're going to put it down the street, and you only have maybe two houses, and then you have a long s- a spot where nobody's using it, and you got to wait ten years for people to come on. It's it's ready to be fully, you know, eighty or ninety percent capacity, day one, so, and it's small lot sizes, to sort of minimize the the high capital cost, so, uh, that may not be true in all areas that you're dealing with around the county where you have have issues, but in this particular area, it's not only the cheapest, but it is the most feasible and practical, and 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 really, if you're going to do it, look at it, you ought to look at just water, water holistically, you've got drinking water, you've got clean water, and you've got rainwater, you know, to be dealt with.
What about mound systems?
They, you know, between the soils and the lot sizes, and the expense of, you know, it is not not even a consideration in that, in those areas. I mean, ag- again, these lot sizes are are small, these are like fifty-foot lot sizes back then, I mean, back in the eighties, they kind of changed it to a minimum of a half-acre lots, and now, the lots now are like, almost a minimum, I think, of one acre, where lots that they built today, they not only have a drain field, but they also have an area dedicated to replace that drain field.
Pete, do you recall if your project cost included city capacity fees?
That's a big, that's excellent, that's an excellent question, because we talk about cheaper and county going double, it did not, they did not. And so we don't really know what that is, and that's that's kind of a...
That's, that could drive the cost to connect as well.
That could drive the cost up if you're paying, you know, large capacity fees, you know, and that could be almost as much as twenty thousand dollars a house, or something like that. Now, I will say, the other thing that's, when you mentioned about the grant money that's coming down the pipe, and and the TMDLs, there's a strong incentive both by the city and the county to remove nitrogen going into the Chesapeake Bay watershed. And the septic systems, you know, you'll get credit for each septic system you take offline, and it's in the range of twelve to fifteen pounds per house per year. So we're talking, you know, a couple thousand pounds a year, or ten thousand pounds a year of nitrogen being saved to the bay watershed. And from what I understand now from M D E, that load gets shared fifty-fifty, states already made that decision. So whether whether you're annexed to Urban Services, or who controls that nitrogen, it'll be a driving factor, or be a a bargaining point where the city would want to bring you in, because they get the nitrogen credits, you also get the nitrogen credits, you also solve a problem, a threefold problem. But I think water, but the water system and the storm drains should not be forgotten in in overall equation, if you can make that happen.
Any other questions? Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Because we kind of like went from your presentation, and we...
That's fine.
Went off on a hundred tangents.
We got to where we needed to be.
That's it, as long, as long as you're all happy, I'm happy.
So, um, question that we ask a lot here, where does this go from here? Just curious as to where, where it lands.
I see two, I I see two ways of going forward, and we can do both. One is to pursue, um, moving forward with this, pursue the design, this is a feasibility study, go into the actual design. Um, I think we would first start with talking with the city to confirm that, um, they're open for us using their system, because if they came, and and previous administrations were against urban service districts. Um, so one step would be to talk with the city to confirm they're they're open for some sort of connection. The next would be talking to the residents and seeing, um, getting public build up. We we spoke to somebody over a year ago that that was willing to go get signatures and petitions and and figure that out, but we haven't heard from them in in a while. Um, also, so so part of it is focus on the specific issue, the other is pursue a countywide water and sewer plan to look at, you know, really, what are the solutions in different parts of the county? Um, I think as expressed here, if you're close to a municipality that has water and sewer capacity and a willingness for us to connect, that would probably be the cheapest option overall, rather than us, um, getting into the business. However, if you take a older subdivision further away from any city, that's where the serious discussion as to, do we want to have a water and sewer authority, or do we want to sub that out to somebody? Do we want to just go urban service districts, and they have a community plan, like we mentioned earlier with Village Down River, something, um, hopefully a more successful model? Um, so I think doing a countywide plan, as well as looking at the specific, would be a way of, a way of going forward.
Any other questions? We'll probably put this on the agenda maybe monthly or quarterly, because as you said before, it is a high priority with the with the majority of the council. Um, what would you think, would it be a monthly follow-up, or would it be better to, monthly would be sufficient?
I'll I'll let Dallas chime in, since he'll be managing.
I I would suggest quarterly, I I think you'd probably see a little more, um, there'd be more of a report, um, on a quarterly basis.
Okay. All right, well, we'll definitely be following up.
That's it. I did have a chance to speak with the mayor regarding urban services, the city is not in favor of urban services at all.
Right.
So I called David Craig at the time, he was in charge of Maryland Department Planning, he came down, met with me to go over some of the things. What we're talking about basically is, let's just say we've got it all hooked up, uh, those streets are all hooked up, it will be twelve to fifteen years before these people would be taxed a city tax rate. If the house sold in the meantime, that would flip over to the city, but it's going to have to go to city, uh, annexation at some point in time, twelve to fifteen years, and that's the way the city would be in agreement to do this, because they would be getting a tax money at that point in time, so.
Yeah, I I've heard as well, they're not...
They will not.
Too keen on urban services.
No, they, the the urban service is not going to pass.
So annexed immediately, but a phased-in taxation?
Phased in between twelve to fifteen years. And this is the same plan that David Craig worked out in Hartford County.
Okay.
That's why we called him, and we we had him come down, talk to us about it, so. But it would get those areas in, like you say, Atlantic, Pacific Avenue, those kind of places, that if not twelve, fifteen years from now, they're not going to be able to live there anyhow.
Right.
And that's, I guess, what 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 you suggested, Weston, is that we have to approach the the homeowners and find out exactly where they are, and include that, I guess, as part of our information.
And the city, too, to make sure we we are on the same page, and that's when we just started having meetings, uh, last month, so.
And then you have to give up fire districts, you know.
You wanted to go there, okay.
Any other questions?
I said, can I just, I want to add a little bit more to when Joe asked me about dealing with with privatization and private companies coming in, and and what I was thinking, what we didn't, while we didn't go too far, and under that framework, I think it would make sense, once the county, if the county was sort of in the business, and they kind of had more of a of a holistic goal and objective being in the business, then I think you might look where a private company would fit in to serve an isolated area. But I think if it just go in the first private company to do the first spot without a master plan, I think we'd say, I don't think it's, it made sense for us to really to do that, because, uh, but if it was part of a coordinated plan...
There was a thought, because a few years ago, when tidewater wanted to come in...
I agree.
You know, um, council basically voted that down, but, um...
I think, I could envision, in terms of the county getting into the business, in terms of trying to bridge, that you might start with some help from private companies, and city-county partnership that would eventually, as it built, come over to probably a more public structure.
Ironically, that's what started with Terra Firma, was that that the county reserved the right to purchase that.
It didn't, yeah.
And in in the long run, and it was expandable, I couldn't say how expandable that actual, um, uh, unit was, but it was an expandable unit. And we were anticipating that time, when there was a lot of growth, that it may be part of a network that we were establishing, so that just, but, you know...
Fundamentally, you need the money, you need the money. I mean, you need the money, the the money to 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 back up that system, there's no way around it, you just need the hundred thousand dollars to to put, you know, you're you're sort of the the last stop, care and tour, but it was based on them providing you the money, so, I mean, that, from day one, that system doesn't work unless they provide you the money. Then you can build off that, you can't build off anything without without that amount of money.
But that was the whole idea, though, that was, that was sort of like, uh, an anticipation of more we were establishing some precedent for a network.
That is kind of like a, a public-private arrangement ship that eventually could end up ultimately going to the public, the public arena.
Yeah.
But, you know, it has to be done right from from day one.
Sure.
You know, the money has to be there.
Any other questions? All right, well, we'll, we will certainly check back with you and get you back on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take your time, Pete, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a request for lunch, uh, we're going to take a recess, if we could, for a half an hour. Thank you.